And thank you for being here. With six out of nine board members present, we'll call this meeting to order at...
Seven out of nine.
And tonight, our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Mike McMillan.
Please face the flag and salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
A couple of announcements. We're waiting for Ms. Horn, and she may be caught in traffic, but Ms. Fugit is not able to be in attendance tonight. Just a reminder that our high school choral showcase is scheduled for tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at Bearden High School. The process for selection of a board student representative for the 2018-19 school year has begun, and Kinley will be sharing more detail with you just a little bit further into our meeting about that. There are no elected officials here, so we will move on to changes to the agenda. Okay, do I have a motion to... Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Approval.
Ms. Roundtree and Mr. Norman II, did all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next up is our superintendent's report with Superintendent Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of board. Just a few updates since we met last week, so give those to you. I was informed today that Buzz Thomas, president of Great Schools Partnership and former interim superintendent of schools, has announced his retirement effective at the end of the month, and that's this month. I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to thank Buzz for his many years of service to students, parents, educators, and the entire Knox County community. Buzz has been a great champion for public education through his efforts to secure additional funds for innovative programs for the district, vocalizing the great things that are happening in our schools, and his support of classroom teachers and principals. We can't thank Buzz enough for what he's done for our community, so I'll just merely say, "Job well done, Buzz." So we do appreciate all he's done for Knox County schools and wish him the very best in his retirement. I have appointed Debbie Adurante as principal, interim principal of Farragut Intermediate to replace Dr. Chris Henson, who has accepted another position outside the district. Chris has done a great job during his tenure at the school. We wish him well in the future, in his future. Ms. Adurante's appointment is effective March 23rd. We have decided to have KCS participate in the 2018 Knoxville New Sentinel Top 40 Workplace Places Survey. Our rationale participating in the survey is to gather feedback from our staff regarding the climate in our school district and for us to gather ideas about the areas in which we need to improve as a school system. The survey will be administered beginning March 20, 2018, by Intergage, a Pennsylvania-based company that was founded in 2006. Intergage conducts top workplace surveys in more than 40 major U.S. cities and has surveyed 2.5 million employees at more than 6,000 organizations in the last year. Survey should take just three to five minutes to complete and will be confidential. Any organization with 35 or more employees can participate but must garner a minimum of 35% response rate to be a contender in this process. And this survey is not to be confused with the state educator survey that is conducted annually. More information will be shared with staff regarding this survey before it is released. As a reminder, spring break is coming up. Students will be out of school from March 12th through 16th, and central office and 12-month employees will be off March 15 and 16. The teacher supply depot will be open on Saturday, March 24th, and dine out for education will take place on Tuesday, April 10. And folks that are attending, plan to attend graduation, need to pay close attention. We've recently been informed by the University of Tennessee that their clear bag policy will be in effect for all of our graduation ceremonies this year. Attendees will be limited to one clear plastic bag, no larger than 12 inches by 6 inches by 12 inches, or a one gallon clear, resealable, plastic storage bag. Small clutch purses or wallets not to exceed 4 and 1/2 inches by 6 and 1/2 inches will also be permitted. No other bags will be allowed inside. All items, including clear bags and clutch purses, are subject to search and entry. No items can be left or stored at the gates. Medically necessary items must also be searched. Madam Chair, members of board, this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the superintendent over his report? Okay, seeing none, we will go on to our annual community council update, and for that, I'll call on Council Chair Ellen Vaviska.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me here this evening. As Ms. Bounds said, my name is Ellen Zaviska. I serve on the staff of the Knoxville Regional Planning, Knoxville-Knox County Planning Commission and the Knoxville Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and I'm the past chair of the Community Health Council. Community Health Council is an appointed body that advises Knox County, City of Knoxville, Town of Farragut on all policies related to health. So I appreciate you, again, having me here tonight. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the Community Health Improvement Plan. You should have a copy of that in front of you. This is, Plan is the, sort of the roadmap for our group in focusing in on four priority health issues in Knox County, those being mental health, opioid abuse, tobacco use, and active living. And the timeframe for the Plan implementation started in 2016, and it continues through 2019. And we partner with four different organizations, one each, heading up each of these four program areas. So just a brief update, since we were last here about a year ago, our partners have improved data collection and communication in various areas. We've been supporting prevention efforts, working for policy change, among a lot of different activities. Some positive trends we've seen in the last year, a regional, a Knox County decline in the adult suicide rates, a decline in the amount of opioids prescribed in Knox County, a decrease in the number of babies born dependent on drugs, and improvement in the smoking rates among youth and pregnant women. We still have a lot to do in certain areas, especially opioid overdose deaths, suicide attempts among youth, and my particular area of focus, pedestrian and bicycle crashes. As I said, you've got the report in front of you. If you have any questions, I'm glad to take them now. You can follow up with me later. We don't have any specific asks for you at this point. We just wanted to, as I said, give you an update on the last year of work, and thank you for the work you do to serve our community, and we look forward to opportunities to work together.
Does anybody on the board have a question for Ms. Vaviska? Mr. Norman?
Thank you. Thanks, Ellen. Do you have some, how's the school bus, walking school bus thing going for the school system?
That's a program, for those of you who are not familiar, that's a program that the Knox County Health Department runs. They're working with, I think, 10 or 12 different schools at this point. They partner a lot with the different school site resource coordinators on creating that, and they meet up and walk home as a group or walk to school as group. They have walking clubs before and after school, and I think they're getting, they're getting a lot of interest from those at the different schools.
So how many, how many schools do we have that have a walking school bus?
Okay, I think it's about 10 or 12, but I can get back to y'all with an email.
No, just in general, I was just wondering. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda for tonight is the committee report on the student representative selection and some initiatives that Ms. Coons has undertaken. So, Kinley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start with the application for student representatives. The selection process is currently taking place to serve as a non-voting member of the board for the 2018-2019 school year. Applicants must be a rising senior attending Knox County Public High School for at least one year in good standing with maintaining a 2.75 minimum grade point average and a willingness to commit a minimum of 15 hours of service per month. The application information and required forms are available on the KCS website and may also be acquired at the main offices and guidance office of each school. Information is also frequently tweeted out on my Twitter page for the student representatives so that it's available on social media as well. Applications and all required documentation are due no later than 4:30 on Thursday, March 29th, and must be submitted to the Knox County Board of Education Office by fax or by email to Terry Cotney. And this, for students, will mostly be available through their counselor office, and so these, if you need any help with the application process, please reach out to your counselor. This is a great opportunity to be involved in the school system and requires a lot of dedication but is very rewarding. After the receipt of all applications, the student selection committee will convene to consider all applications through a blind judging process during early April, and top candidates will be notified and interviewed shortly thereafter. The new student representative will be announced at our board meetings in May. In accordance with board policy, the committee will consist of at least five individuals, including a board member, Ms. Bounds, Secondary Education Director Cheryl Hickman, Principal Jason Webster, and myself as an outgoing student representative and a community member who is to yet be determined. And so that's just some information regarding the opportunities that are available for rising seniors in Knox County. In addition to that, I've been meeting with the student representative committee with the student reps for each high school. This was an initiative that began this year where each high school has a senior representing their specific school that the student representative on the board may correspond with to address different issues throughout the county. So in light of recent events at the Parkland School in Florida, I've spoken with the 15 student representatives about their concerns over safety and mental health in schools, and so they have met with students at their schools, gathered feedback on what people are concerned about, what fears still are surfacing throughout the school system, and they will continue to seek out feedback from students in the high school and middle school as these policy changes in different states begin to, you know, continue to come up. And so I just wanted to share with you some of the concerns and different requests that the student representatives had, just so you're aware of what students are talking about. And so one of the main needs that students saw was the need to prioritize the availability of counselors and/or mental health professionals at schools. This was recognized not to be necessarily a Knox County obligation, but is mainly tied to state policies in a way, but for Knox County to make it a priority to have those services available to students because it has been seen as largely a mental health issue that students are dealing with and that they need to have resources to be able to cope with. In addition, they, the consensus of the student board was that law enforcement needs to be present full-time at every school. There were some concerns about not having full-time officers at every school, and they felt that that was a very necessary precaution to have at each school. It would increase the feeling of safety and make them feel more secure. Lastly, they believe that there need to be resources for students regarding anonymous feedback, which has been set up through Knox County, but I guess made more available to people knowing that if there was such a threat that they would be able to have a safe place to go and talk about that. And so, and preparedness for the situations. So whether it be protocol initiated in school or not, there needs to be, they believe that they need to be a set out, set out protocol for each of these situations that needs to be gone over as soon as school starts, not necessarily at the end of it, just so students know exactly what to do as soon as they're going into school. There is a delay in when these protocols are carried out, and so they felt it was necessary that those be addressed first, not at the end of the protocol or even after something like this happens. And so, in conclusion, it has been recognized that these issues are largely based in the social trends among our generation, and there is not necessarily as much the school board can do about it, and they recognize that. They're not asking all of these things of you all, they're asking these things of a larger system in general. And so the policy changes that they see need to be recognized must occur at the state and the national level. And so in light of this, and in that being said, we are setting, we're going to begin setting a precedent for this student board going forward, and we're going to be creating a student legislative priority list where our, the student concerns in Knox County's will come together and will make a legislative priority list similar to the board's that we will then compile, bring it to the board for your all's feedback, and then ask for the support on that after it's seen and approved by the board so that students may take their concerns straight to the legislator because they see that that's where the most change and impact can be made in these areas. And so I ask that I just continue to support this and make this a precedent going forward. Obviously, now, it is a little late in my term to be able to really set this up effectively, but to continue to make it a priority to have student concerns, you know, supported by this board and brought forth to the state level where we can really make a bigger impact. So I thank you all, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure I speak for our whole board when I just say thank you to Kinley for her work, and she has developed a lot of new things in her time, time on the board with us, and I'm so impressed by her, having taught her in elementary school, and I know that you've put a lot of time and effort, way above that 15 hours a month, so we appreciate your service, and it's been a pleasure serving with you. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kinley, when you were talking to the students, was, was, as far as the different schools, were there all different concerns depending on the location or the area? Or they, so, but they all had, I know it's all the same kind of thing, but with Parkland and all that that's happened, did you find that all the schools have the same concerns, I guess?
Surprisingly, it was very consistent across all of schools, which I was not expecting, but every single student representative said the need for counselors. Every single student representative expressed the need for law enforcement. It was very consistent, and they, they went and discussed this with their peers to get the consensus of them as well. And so after speaking with them, they, they were very consistent in their answers, which was, I mean, easy on my part, but it was very good to see, you know, the collaboration of everyone's on the same page with this.
Well, I'm glad to hear that the students are really engaged, and I want to participate because these are some of the same concerns we the board have, to make sure we have enough counselors and mental health issues and officers. So these are things that we have talked, and I'm glad to know that they are in tune with what's going on in their schools and take a lead and want to make a change and want to take it forward. Thank you for so much of what you do.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you, Kinley.
Thank you all.
Next on our agenda will be the discussion of the March 7th regular session agenda, and board member Superintendent Thomas has requested that Agenda Item 8B regarding board policy be 171 be withdrawn until it is reviewed further at the upcoming policy review meeting, and then I'm going to refer to Ms. Roundtree for the next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It came to my attention that at Gap Creek, they do their annual Wesley Woods trip, and they have had a change in ownership, or I guess the people that are maintaining Wesley Woods, and that the contract is something new this year that they're going to have to sign, and it was just received by Ms. Light, the principal there, I believe, today or yesterday, no, today. And so we're going to have to, I'm asking that that go on the board's agenda for Wednesday for us to vote on because they are going on their fifth-grade field trip. I believe it's March 21st and 22nd.
Okay, so board members, it has been added to your regular session agenda tonight as Item 7C17, and will be permanently added to that agenda without objection, and a copy of the contract and fiscal note are attached for your review. So that being said, we'll move into items and contracts, and we'll open the floor for a discussion of number one under items and contracts. Is there any discussion on this item about the agreement with Blue Cross and Blue Shield? Okay. Is there any discussion on Item 2, the memorandum of understanding with Knox County of Children's Services by the Administration and Staff? Ms. Hill?
I probably from, for Melissa Massey. Has there been an issue with this, that we have to have a formalized contract? Has there been some question about who pays for what? Might be more accurate question.
Okay, Ms. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just a new requirement set forth by the state that we have to have an MOU.
Okay, I don't need to hear another thing.
Okay.
Ms. Massey, you might want to take a seat closer. Okay, item number three, the contract with Helen Ross McNabb. Any discussion on this one? Ms. Coons?
I just had a few questions because this is a way that Knox County, I guess, can supplement those mental health professionals. So I was just wondering, how many schools have lives in counselors at the moment?
Ms. Massey, do you want to attend that, or Dr. Ryswick?
How, looks like it's me.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Coons, do you want to ask her again? Does, do you understand, Ms. Massey, what she's asking?
How many schools have the counselors that they are making available to Knox County?
So currently, the only schools that have the Helen Ross McNabb Support Counselors are the schools that are community schools so that we are, the Great Schools Partnership has a contract with Helen Ross McNabb. We put out an RFP with them understanding that this is pending funding being available. So we have a couple of sources that we're looking at some grant dollars, and Lauren Denton, who's magnificent, is busily looking for some grant dollars. We're looking at maybe using some of our Safe Schools dollars for this initiative, and then we'll share information with schools who may have additional Title I or other funding that they could, if they wanted to, with their funding, purchase a mental health worker for their school.
So to clarify, this, only the schools that are community schools or, and/or Title I funded schools, possibly?
Currently, only the schools that are community schools because we don't have another contract for any other school other than community schools to have this service available. So passing this contract would make it available to other schools.
Okay.
Ms. Hill?
This $23,000, is that what we paid them?
It, well, that would be our portion of it. They would have to have a clientele that had either Ten Care or private pay, but we've been very successful in that in our other schools. We don't anticipate that being an issue.
Okay, so our, our cost would be the 23?
Correct.
Okay. Seeing no other questions then, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Massey. I don't think you're next. So, item number four, to approve request of Farragut Intermediate School to purchase technology. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, item number five, approved tour agreement with Gerber Tours for services relating to Gresham Middle School. Any discussion? Item six, approved request of Hall's High School to purchase band uniforms using their pilot and band booster donations. Okay. Item number seven and eight, we'll look at together, which is a service agreement with ZFX Flying Effects. Questions on this? Item number nine, request of Carnes Elementary to purchase technology using coupon book sales. Questions? Discussion? Item number 10, approved service contract with Brownie Box Photo Booth. Okay, item number 11, agreement with Middle Tennessee State University on behalf of Confucius Institute at MTSU to allow qualified guest teachers. Discussion? Questions? Item 12, approved guest agreement with the Caliche Retreat Center. Discussion? Item 13, license agreement with the Pavilion at Hunter Valley Farm for South Doha. Item 14, approved team agreement with Adidas for athletic footwear for West High School. Item 15, approved agreement with Hotel Edison at Times Square and for West High School. Discussion on 16, license agreement with TVA for use of space at Gibson-Halls High School and support of TVA's Cadet School to Work Program. Okay, we'll move into board policies. Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, not on that one. Item 17 then, that was the, yeah, Wesley Woods and Gap Creek. Any questions for Ms. Roundtree on that? Okay. Now we can move into board policies. 8A, second reading, this is the second reading of the wellness policy. Questions? Discussion? Concerns? Item B, first reading of, that was withdrawn, so we'll remove that one. So we'll move into grants. Approved three-year application or receipt of funds for a school improvement grant for Vine Magnet School. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Dr. Ryswick is probably the one to answer this question. So I noticed on the school cover sheet, the, so it's the five-year grant with the planning or sustainability, so I noticed that it's three years of, I'm just not sure which option we're under here. John, if you could clarify that for me?
Dr. Ryswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. This is the third year for the SIG grant for Vine, and the state actually, since they went through ESSA from No Child Left Behind, all these grants are coming to an end of July of this year, and then the state will reissue based on the new priority and I zones, based on how schools do academically. So this is actually the end of that, the state pulled it at the end of this year, for the end of this year.
So I'm just, I'm curious though, because when we applied for this grant, would we not have had to select how we were going to implement, like, three full years of implementation, then two years of sustainability? I'm just curious about that, so what the actual sustainability plan is. I didn't find that in these documents.
You're right, the, so, so the funding for this from the SIG grant mostly went to extend the contracts for the Vine teachers to 221-day contracts, and, you know, typically in a cycle, these grants may be, may be able to be renewed based on the academic outcome. So we were given word that those were going to end from the state. So at this point, I mean, outside of general purpose dollars, we don't have dollars to maintain those, and so I think that that was part of the 216-day contract from that side. So we talked with the state, and so they have a cycle based, again, on, on what schools hit the priority list. There's a, there's a June application window for those, but Knox County has the chance that they may not have any, and since we have any in the bottom 5% off the CUSP list from the end of this year, so they've asked us to probably wait until August when that list comes out, because if you don't, if you don't have a priority school, you won't receive any funding from the state. So we're hopeful that we don't, even though we'd like to have the funding.
Okay, so you'll know more, it sounds like, in August, and then that, that cycle to get the grant, I mean, is it an automatic because it's a grant application, or are they only selecting, you know... they only selecting, you know, certain schools that are priority schools?
It's a, it's a competitive grant, but we've been told that, that, you know, for the most part, we've been told if you're not a priority, you won't receive it at all. They won't even consider you. So, I mean, our hope would be if we have a priority school, that it could receive that. So, the two grants are the, again, are the I-zone grants, but you're supposed to have five, a minimum of five priority schools to receive that, which we hope we don't have. And then, the other will be a SIG grant for those schools. So, it would be competitive, but I feel like we would receive some funding if the plan was good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this item? Okay, we're going to look at B. Any discussion on it, with the contract with the University of Tennessee? Item C, Memorandum of Agreement with several organizations there. Any discussion, questions? Item D, receipt of funds from Farmers Insurance. Item E, application or receipt of funds from the Tennessee STEM Innovation Network Mini Okay, we'll move into Contracts, and we have two. Ten A, questions, concerns, discussion? Okay, Ten B. And lastly, Item C. Okay, we'll move into Regular Agenda Items, and there's one, and that is to approve tenure for eligible teachers as recommended by the Superintendent. Ms. Drummond, did you have anything you wanted to address on that tonight? No? Okay. Any discussion by the Board or questions on the tenure? Ms. Hill?
Dr. Drummond, is this, this is tenure year, they actually are credited with this whole school year?
Once the, go ahead, Ms. Thank you, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Once the vote is approved and you approve them, then they will receive tenure for this year, but it will go into effect on the first day of their new contract year of the next school year.
Okay. So, the, the way that our evaluations are now with tenured teachers and the scores they have to receive, that will include this school year as a tenure year?
For this year, this, they received all of their scores for the last school year, so the vote is for the last school year.
For?
It does not include the 278 names that you have now. We don't have scores for this school year, so it can't account for this school year.
Okay. But their, okay.
Okay.
So, their tenure, it, it, it will, assuming it's voted on, be for this school year then? This will be year one?
It will go into effect this school year. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'm confused. If you don't have the scores for this year, how are you sure that they would be eligible to be tenured?
Because, Ms. Drummond. Because it already, it's scores for the past five years is where it comes into.
Okay, so it doesn't take, this year is not even a part of it at all?
You don't have scores for this year yet.
Right. That's why, okay, that's why I was, okay.
But you're asking when the tenure starts. The tenure is for the 1718 school year, once it's voted on, and it'll go into effect at the beginning of the first day of their contract year.
Okay, so, and if they've, and, and there's also requirements to maintain that, and if it goes below it this year, then they'll start looking at them for the next two years. I mean, I know there's a thing that if you don't maintain, then they can take it away. So, then, even though they get it, that doesn't mean, then they start looking for this year to see if they can, they maintain tenure.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Okay, seeing that concludes our Regular Agenda Items. There is no one signed up for public forum, so we'll go to Board Forum. And Mr. McMillan, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, Ms. Hill? No? Ms. Roundtree? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the Superintendent and the staff for helping put together the ribbon cutting at South Door High School for the new library on Friday. It was a great event. I know some of you were able to come, and I just hope that if you haven't been out to see the 21st Century Library yet, that you'll make time to come because it's wonderful.
All right, Mr. Norman? Ms. Owen? Ms. Dethridge?
I just want to thank District One. I see a lot of people from my district out there, and I want to thank you for coming and joining us for the meeting today. Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Koontz? Okay, and I will just say, Go Panthers, they're playing at seven for a substate at Science Hill, and want to wish them success, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Show me.
Mr. McMillan, seconded by Ms. Horn, meeting is adjourned.
The Superintendent to do that.